This is the comfortable chair. Move him around. Did you get my note?
Well, I think I saw the whole, all the comments and everything in the Facebook posts too.
Yeah. Yeah, that was interesting.
Yeah.
Ling, how you been? Well, the big clock on the wall says six o'clock and I will call this meeting to order. It was a little dicey there for a while since I was sitting here by myself, but we do have a quorum, so we can proceed with the meeting. Glad to see the turnout tonight. We don't usually have this kind of attendance at planning and zoning, so we're happy that you're here. Hope that we can get you out in time to dodge the showers that seem to be rather present as we come and go today. So, I'll call a meeting to order and call attention to the commission that there has been a change in the agenda. That items for the annexation and rezoning, those items, NX 01-18 and rezoning RA 01-18 are withdrawn. Mrs. Bowen has withdrawn those from the agenda, so we will not be considering those two items tonight. So with that change, any other comments on the agenda? I'd ask for an adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All approved, raise your hand. Okay, we're good to go. All business, minutes of the last meeting. What's the council's position?
I move that they be accepted as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the last meeting, all in favor?
No.
Approved, okay. New business. Lanis?
Good evening, everyone. Lanis Lyons, Planning and Zoning Specialist for the City of Villarica. First order is final plat, application FP 0118, JLB Development Incorporated, Douglasville, Georgia, request final plat approval for Twin Oaks Unit 2A located at Great Oak Plex, Villarica, Georgia, parcel number V 06-004-0136 in Land Lot 130 of the 6th District in Carroll County, currently zoned plan development. The property consists of 3.568 plus or minus acres of a total of 28.39 plus or minus acres and is located in Ward 2. So, quick summary from background, the applicant, JLB Development, submitted a final plat application for a portion of Phase 2 in the Twin Oaks subdivision. Currently Phase 1 of Twin Oaks is still under construction, but it's nearing completion. Some of the infrastructure in Phase 2 is already in place. If you, on the staff portion, you can see the streets are laid out in there. And the applicant is requesting plat approval of 12 of the 79 lots of Phase 2 in Twin Oaks. The lot and configuration of his lots are remaining the same essentially. They just like to move forward with starting 12 of the lots. This Twin Oaks, this second phase of Twin Oaks was purchased a while back, but it used to be Asbury Phase 2, Asbury subdivision. It was Phase 2 of that, but the owners at the time of Twin Oaks purchased that and wanted to add it on as it was currently, as it was configured. And they was moving forward with 12 of the lots of that 79 at this time. Staff is recommending approval. And that's all for me.
Any questions of staff? Is the applicant present? State your name, please.
Thank you, Aaron McCullough.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you for hearing our request. Yes, sir, we are, I am the surveyor and engineer for the owner of the property. As staff said, this is a portion of Phase 2 of Twin Oaks subdivision. This is the first 12 lots. These first 12 lots already had infrastructure in place, required some inspection and a few things to take care of to get those lots platted and in place, so.
Any questions of the applicant?
So you're the engineer?
Yes, sir.
Good. Do you have any comments about ingress and egress to this site? It seems to me that there's limited, I mean, there is access, it's just, you've already got 100 and, what was it, 12, 14 lots that are developed in Phase 1?
Yes, there's somewhere around.
Something like that.
Yes.
And we're planning, there's another 79 planted here. We're only doing the first 12, I grant you, but to get from these 12, from a house in these 12, back out through the existing Twin Lake, Twin Oaks, and then from there, back out to a route that you can safely access, looks to me a bit problematic. I have been at the intersection of 61 and South Carroll Road a number of times and I'll bet you an hour ago, that was very congested. Same thing with 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning. And so, we're planning to make this eventually close to a 200 lot residential subdivision, I'm guessing, with only one ingress and egress. I don't know if you all had considered it, or from the layout, it doesn't appear to me that there's really much of a, much relief that can be had, but it concerns me to have that many people kind of bottlenecked and only have one street entrance available. Any comments?
I would refrain from making comments unless you have a specific question pursuant to that, Mr. Flowers.
Have you considered this, or do you, do you believe there might be some other secondary route?
At this time, at this time, there's no secondary plan for another entrance.
Uh huh.
All these streets and configuration were designed in accordance with city standards and requirements and regulations.
Very true, okay. I just think it's going to be a, sure.
Mr. Flowers, the part of the new specifications that were just adopted limit future reaching the 200 lot maximum without a second entrance.
Okay.
They, all these rigs are already in.
I know, I've already ridden the property, so, but yeah, so this will be a little under the new maximum when they do get the whole thing developed. Okay. But, and of course, it's exacerbated by the 61 and South Carroll because South Carroll can be backed up, you know, way back up to the apartments from the, tell the police to be prepared, I think they'll have some accidents to respond to in there. What about the curb and gutter and asphalt? They've been in now for what, 15, 16 years?
Yes, sir, and they were recently inspected in the past 12 months by the city, and we've made those repairs and those kind of things for these portions.
And what can we do about, I mean, there are weeds growing between the joint, between the asphalt and the concrete. Can we effectively eliminate those and not have any effect to the underlayment of the asphalt? I'm concerned about having to come back in there and having to resurface that area because roots from the weeds and things have undermined the base of the road.
Do you want to address that one?
Not to speak for the applicant, but the 12 lot addition we're talking about tonight on the plant, they already have posted a maintenance bond.
Uh huh.
On that stretch of roadway and infrastructure, as they will have to do in the next phase as well.
Okay.
They just need to do a lot of cleanup.
They do.
In the next phase, which they intended to do.
Some of the weeds are knee-high on me, and so I, okay, that would have been helpful to have had in the summary or something somewhere.
Yeah, okay, but I already have that bond in place.
Great. In the existing section, are you affiliated with that portion of the development?
Phase 1, the existing, no, sir.
You're going to continue the same, does the developer intend to continue the same price and character of the proposed units as are already in Phase 1?
I believe that is, that's the intent, yes, sir.
This is just a side comment to staff. When I was there, I did not see a rezoning sign posted at the property. There may have been, or it may have blown away, but when I was there, I did not see one.
When, when did you go?
Sunday.
Yeah, well, I posted, I posted it. Thursday, Friday, last week.
Then I just must have missed it.
Right, and well, it was only one way in, right when you turn left, sitting up right at the incline.
Did you see it, John?
Uh, no.
Oh, you make, now that's smart. Yeah.
So it should have been somewhere in there. Can't speak for the integrity of my sign.
Okay, and all the municipal utilities are available at the site?
Yes, sir, they are.
Are there any plans for further development beyond these 12? Are you involved in that, or?
Yes, sir, for the remainder of that portion, but there is work to be done, to be completed.
Do you know when that would be presented, approximately?
Next 12 months.
Okay, okay. Is there an HOA associated with this subdivision? And these 12 lots would be included as part of that HOA?
As an amendment to that, to that document.
Yeah, again, as, like Mr. Flowers, I did drive through the area. The HOA is not doing a very, a very good job, in my opinion, of maintaining, because the lawns in many of the houses are really in pretty tough shape, so, again, that's not your responsibility, but, Mr. Marchman, you have any questions to the applicant?
No, I, I would.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Anybody in the audience that would care to speak for or against this proposal? Seeing none, what is the commission's desire?
I move to approve this submitted.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the final plat for JNB Development, or JLB Development, all in favor?
opposed.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is RA 0417.
Okay, yes, RA 0417, David Wiley of Dallas, Georgia, requests a rezoning for property located at 1030 Third Street, Villarica, Georgia, parcel number V 03-010-0013 in Land Lot 190 of the 6th District in Carroll County, currently zoned R 20, single-family residential to LI Limited Industrial. The property consists of 10.81 plus or minus acres and is located in Ward 3. Y'all are super familiar with this application, it came to us in November. At that time, the applicant, Mr. Wiley, requested the rezoning from single-family to limited industrial for the proposed use of equipment storage. After, he provided an updated description on March 16th, and that was in the, between the time that he had come to the planning commission and was moving forward to city council. By virtue of him adding the updated description, the city council requested that it be sent back to planning commission to consider the site plan that was submitted with his application. And between that time, the applicant has requested two deferrals, which were granted by the planning commission, and has up, you know, gave the updated request to not, not for the proposed storage use. I think he's found other facilities to accommodate his needs in that regard, but just wants to rezone the parcel to limited industrial for future development. Staff recommendation is for approval with conditions, and it's two conditions, to access to site shall be provided from Sabre Parkway, no vehicular access shall be allowed from Third Street, and all access easement shall be provided to the Community Development Department.
Any questions?
Any questions for staff?
With that condition of using Sabre Parkway and no vehicular access allowed from Third Street, what then becomes the intention of the applicant regarding the residential use and occupancy of the single-family dwelling that's located back there on the backside of the property?
Well, he's, I believe in a purchase agreement with the owners of the property, that if he can rezonate to the industrial, then at some point in future development, that residence would go away.
Well, but, in, okay, in future development, but if we grant this zoning change, don't these conditions, these approval conditions take effect along with the zoning change? I mean, if this goes to city council and is approved, then wouldn't the property owner still be, wouldn't he be in violation of this zoning approval if he continues to rent out or occupy that single-family dwelling which is using ingress and egress from Third Street?
Well, not, not really, the, the, the use can stand as it is, it'll be, become non-conforming because of what is, but it can be legally used as it is up until, you know, the time that any change is made, material change is made on the property. Once the, once the applicant decides to move forward, plans to do anything, he'll have to connect to Sabre Parkway, he'll have to close off vehicular access to Third Street because, because of what, what's going to be there, which is like limited industrial, which is quite, you know, it doesn't provide much of a transition from that single-family community back there. Third Street, as we know, is very narrow, kind of winding. If something limited industrial is going there, that's not the avenue for that, the equipment and vehicles that will be using that property. That's not the way for them to access it, so we feel it best that they connect to the side that's already industrial. It's already set up to accommodate that, that type of, those type of vehicles, that type of weight on the road, and it's a more straight shot and not narrowing and winding and you're not disturbing the single-family community in the, that's already existing.
Well, I, you know, I'd like to see us, I guess then amend this condition to what you just said, that, you know, conditional.
Okay.
Use will be permitted since it already exists as long as no other development activity whatsoever takes place on the property, and that before they begin to develop the property, that they close off the third, that they.
Okay.
Vacate that house and close off that Third Street entrance, because right now, it's still active and used.
Okay, so, and also, the, the owners of the property are here now, and I've been speaking with them throughout this process. If they like to come and speak, but I think they are all out of that house at this point.
Well, I don't know.
But.
It didn't appear that way a few days ago, but maybe they are. I just want to be certain we're clear when we issue a light industrial zoning that we, that the landowner understands we expect compliance with the terms of that zoning requirement.
So, we're looking to amend the first condition, access to site shall be provided from Sabre Parkway, no vehicular access shall be allowed from Third Street prior to, you know.
Except for this one existing dwelling, and then none at all once they begin any development work.
Okay, so, no vehicular access shall be allowed from Third Street once light, limited industrial activities begin on site?
Or development activities of any kind. Is the logging that's going on there on, is it off this site, is that on an adjacent site?
That's on the site next, next to it.
Property next door to it?
Right.
Well, that's what I thought, but it wasn't clear from the.
Yeah, from the, if you look at the staff where the aerial is, that's in the parcel directly to the north, there is a house in that north.
Right, but there were woods in this picture.
Right. Yeah, all that's gone now.
I know, that's why they're logging up over there and, okay.
Okay.
And have staff discussed? There were comments in the previous submission, or to the submission, where adjacent property owners were concerned about traffic and congestion, and I have to agree, it's a valid concern. Is there, are there any plans to improve, is that 101 out there, and that's part of the bypass, right? The alleged proposed by.
It's a G dot route.
Yeah.
City has no control over that at all.
All right, but if you've been there, you know, morning or evening rush hour, it's already, I mean, a lot of traffic. And I don't know how much this property owner intends to add to that with truck traffic or other vehicles, but it's going to be a miss. Probably is out of our hands, but, and, I'm sorry, those are all the nits I wanted to pick.
Okay, so we're gonna, well, amend the first condition, no vehicular access shall be allowed from Third Street once limited industrial activities begin on site.
Right, there was, I want to say, we will allow them to use, to continue to use that house.
Right.
For single-family occupancy only, and that house and those occupants come in and out of that Third Street entrance, but as soon as they file a development plan or start to put a tractor out there.
Right.
They need to vacate that dwelling, and we need to close off that Third Street access.
Is the applicant present? Your name, please?
Sure, Mike Patterson. I'm with Commercial Realty Services in Carrollton. I'm a commercial broker, have worked with David, the applicant, for about, I don't know, seven or eight years, I guess, and actually worked for a while in that group 10 or 12 years ago. Let me ask a favor, because my hearing aids sometimes don't work in all directions. Would you mind going over the two exceptions or the amended exceptions or conditions that we, one more time for me, so I can hear them?
I can give, it's, basically, the one thing that we're really amending is that condition number one in the package here, which will, and it'll say that, that the existing dwelling can still continue to be occupied until development plans or, or any kind of development activity, you know, is begun there. And as soon as that occurs, they need to vacate that dwelling and seal off that Third Street access.
Yeah, I think that's, that was the plan originally. We may want to do something along the lines of a temporary easement to get those people from Third Street to their house. I don't know how that would, you know, if that's.
Well, if they, if you block it off, if they come in through Sabre Parkway, they can get to it there. Now, it's, it needs to be cleared a little bit to get them a driveway through there, but, but the idea is not to allow ingress and egress from Third Street, because that is strictly residential, and like she said.
And that's totally agreed, that's no problem at all.
Smaller homes and that street will not bear.
No.
Additional commercial traffic.
No, it won't, it's not built for, and, and we agree with that, that's not a problem. And the, the second condition was.
Just always means shall be, all access assessment easement shall be provided to the Community Development Department, so.
Prior to proceeding.
Just a couple of comments, and this is just sort of a general market items that, you know, you guys, you already know it, but I work in the industrial market fairly regularly, and there's a lot of people looking to come this way, and there's nowhere to put them, quite honestly, you know, it's just, there's just no space to be had. We've got two different companies, one from Fulton Industrial, one from, where they from? North Dakota, have looked at that property to, for it to become their home base, if you will. One's a trucking company, one is a moving company. Now, they, neither one of them have made that decision yet. David has, of course, had the property laid out and surveyed and, you know, pretty much had a preliminary development plan made up, and he was planning on moving his company there, and he just had a better deal than Dallas and decided, or in Hiram had decided to stay there. So, what we're looking to do is to really create a small industrial park and provide, you know, some buildings that would be either warehousing or, or light manufacturing that would fit into the zoning to develop that park, and, and of course, that would require, you know, closing off the backside of Third Street and providing the, the proper buffer that the city calls for between light industrial and residential, we understand that part of it, so, but.
Is there adequate, is there adequate room to do that?
Sorry.
In this, in this area, is there adequate room for that consideration?
I think so, I mean, I have, I had looked at the regs, but it's probably what?
Forty feet.
Forty feet, yes, it's no problem.
Okay.
It's a, it's a big piece of property, 10.8, and to bring that buffer in and, you know, kind of leave enough greenery, if you will, you know, whatever we can to, to kind of create the buffer there between, what you're going to get in light industrial is not going to be noisy or dusty.
Right.
Or smoky typically, but you may have trucks moving in and out, and that's going to be noisy, so, we try to, you know, hopefully eliminate some of that, but, good development, I think, and it's, it's truly needed that, you know, if we can put, you know, a couple of 20, 25, 30,000 square foot warehouses and, you know, get a couple of companies in there that, you know, will do a good job and provide, you know, 20, 30 jobs, that would be a plus, so.
Right, well, we're all aware of the need for additional space to bring in and attract further industry, so, anything we can do in that area?
I-20 corridor is finally beginning to develop and come this way. It's, it's really doing much better in Douglas County and in its. It's really doing much better in Douglas County and is coming on out, and you're beginning to see a lot of people interested in Temple and Breman, so
Okay.
You know, but we would appreciate your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions for
One of the potential, just curiosity, one of the potential tenants or one of the people interested in the property was from North Dakota?
SNS Transport has been looking for a, for a location
And they're out of North Dakota?
They're looking for a southern hub.
I wouldn't blame them, have you ever been to North Dakota in the wintertime?
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't, I don't blame them, I'd be looking to come to Georgia, too.
They're in Grand Fork, and they have about 140 trucks that they, you know, across the country trucks, and they're looking at it, they do Hondas work in Lincoln, a lot of it, so they're looking for a southern hub, and Villarica may be their home, you never can tell, we're still working with them to see what transpires, but
That many, and that size and that many trucks will create a little disturbance and some noise and some
Nationwide, but this hub would handle probably 7, 8, 10, you know, it's not a, it wouldn't be, all of them would be here at one time, I don't think.
The more successful they get, the better, the bigger it'll be. Okay, I just, that was just curiosity.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Anybody wish to speak in favor of this request? Anybody that wishes to speak against this request? Hearing none, ask for the commission's favor. What do you wish to do?
I move that we approve the request with the changes to the conditions as we discussed.
I can do that with you after the meeting if you want me to, we can just clean up the language. Is that, it's just, just some simple edits.
It's been moved and approved, all in favor? Opposed? You'll have to come before counsel on Tuesday night and do this all over again, but, and add some concerns the last time, so hopefully you'll, you'll be able to clear those up, so. Okay, that completes the items on our agenda. Back to staff comments.
Just a couple, Mr. Hannabag, you're on the steering committee for the comprehensive plan update. We will have a steering committee meeting on June 4th at the library, and we will host another public meeting with probably another activity similar to last time, on June 11th at the library.
So the meeting has been set for the library?
Yes.
Because there's been no communication from
For the June 4th, or?
June 4th.
Okay, yeah, we just locked it in late last week, going, just trying to make sure the library could accommodate us for that space. You should be getting notice very soon from, from EDA.
I'll tell you, communication with this group has been miserable, in my opinion.
I will let her know this evening.
Oh, she knows. I've let her know, so
Okay, I'll, I'll make sure I follow with her in the morning, make sure we get everything
You know, the first notice came out that said the meeting would be on Tuesday, June 4th. Well, June 4th is Monday, so I called that to her attention and said, is it Tuesday or is it Monday? So, and then there's still, until your comment, been no location identified, so appreciate that. So it is 4 o'clock on Monday at the library, okay? Okay.
And that, that's, those are the major, well, you know, for me.
Okay.
I would like sometime soon, it's not any urgent, there's nothing earth-shaking, but I'd probably like to sit down with you and Bobby and maybe John, anybody else who'd like to, and talk about, this is just a couple of things I wanted to ask questions about, or maybe have some suggestions about the format, and a couple of things we might do to make understanding the initial package we get a little easier.
That's totally fine, I know you guys have sunset laws about how many of you can meet at once without it being a public meeting, so
Yeah, that's not, not an issue, so
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Yeah, we're open, you know, anytime you guys want to come see us.
It was just a call and setup, okay, great, thanks.
At this time, the chair will entertain any public comments. Anybody that wishes to speak to the planning and zoning commission, please come forward and state your name, and limit your talks to three minutes, but I don't think that's an issue, so please make your comments at this time. I guess we have none, so that completes our agenda, so if you have a motion to adjourn, okay. Been moved and seconded, approved, we're adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Well, I'll tell you what, this is a quiet group to be as large as it was.